There we go. Oh, I've learned how to fix them.[46.82][46.82](laughter) All right, let's call our meeting to order School Building Committee Thursday, August 7th. And we are calling to order at 8:35. And we'll go around for a roll call. John Gould.
Here.
Dave Palazzetti.
Here.
Michael Pedraza.
Here.
Kate Mastinanti, I'm here. Luke Murray.
Here.
And Terry Lynch.
Here.
We have a couple folks who are not going to attend and then a couple folks who are going to be late. But we have a quorum, so we're going to get going. I've received no public correspondence from the -- any emails that have come in, I have not received any. So at this point in time, no public correspondence to discuss. That brings us to item three, Discussion, Action, Site Enabling Work. And we have Kate Turner from Left Field who's going to kick us off.
It's actually on, thankfully. All right. Make sure I'm sharing the right screen here. So I'll invite Gil Bane up to speak more specifically to the construction activities. But they did mobilize on August 4th as planned and have started some clearing in preparation for the temp road work. This is the four-week look ahead that they've provided, which shows the dig safety -- ground penetrating radar, mobilization efforts, and starting to cut and cap some of the existing utilities, as well as demoing the site clearing, grubbing, and starting with tree removal. I do have a couple of photos that Mark was kind enough to send over to me yesterday that I can pull up. Mark, if you want to come up, you can -- happy to have you speak to them. Oh, shoot, hold on. I'm not sharing that screen. Give me one second.
Any surprises with the GPR?
No, no, actually, good. No, actually, good. So we GPR'd everything. Everything was pretty much where it was shown. The good news is the water line that had to be relocated is not going to need to be relocated. It was found to be far enough away from the new foundation line that it's not going to interfere with it, so.
Can you say what GPR means?
Oh, ground penetrating radar.
Thank you.
So it's a machine that can look under the ground and tell you where all the underground utilities are, so you don't dig them up. Yep, so here is--
Was the water line moved base, or is that part of the site contingency?
It was part of the site enabling package.
Yeah, but I mean, was it contingency, or was it part of the base?
No, it was part of the original scope, so we'll end up getting a--
So we'll get a credit?
We'll get a credit back from them, yeah. So this photo here, I put my glasses on. So this was us actually digging in the existing roadway or the existing bus loop, looking for that water line. The ground penetrating radar only took it to a certain point, and then we -- he lost it. So we had to actually do some test pits and dig it up to try to find out where it was. And then, once we found it, determined we were in good shape. This is a view looking from School Street, kind of just at the overall view of the front of the high school. The patio is completely demolished at this point. There's some soil erosion control on pallets in front of where the patio was. And then off to the right, we've -- can't really see it in this photo. I think there's another photo that we'll get to that shows what the old greenhouse area looks like. So we've cleared that all out. The school is currently working on taking down the greenhouse and saving it, per Becky's wishes. So once the school gets that taken down, which should be the end of the day today, all the other debris that's going to be left there that was in it and around it will take care of and put in a dumpster, so that whole greenhouse area will be clear.
Was there any -- had we gotten any feedback about that shed?
So I haven't heard -- I have not heard anything back on the shed. We're fine with leaving it. In fact, I put a bunch of our stuff in it, kind of used as a little storage unit for now. Becky asked that when she gets back, I think on the 12th or the 14th, or something like that, from vacation, she'll look into whether they're going to keep it or not keep it, and then we'll deal with it from there. But so we've left it for now.
Perfect. I do want to say out loud, just so that anybody who's watching, this is all pre-work before the actual construction work, so that if anybody's wondering about groundbreaking ceremonies, they didn't miss it, we're going to be doing it. There will be a formal one created. We're working out the planning and that, and that will come forward in another week or two. But I just want to make sure that anybody who's watching isn't sad that they missed it because it is TBD'd.
Question for both Kates, just because I saw that picture there. Are we considering putting like a camera or a time lapse video or something up for the website?
At this time, we have not worked that into the budget.
Something to think about. It's good for people to go keep an eye on it.
But yeah, I agree. I think that was part of, like, there'd been--
Doug would love to do that.
A very high-level, low-level, high-level discussion about that way back when. But I think we never really -- we didn't do anything with it. We didn't really get into detail about having it. I think it was one of those, when we first brought on Left Field, it was like, yeah, we can do this. And then we never explored it type of thing. So but I agree that it may be something we want to sort out, a way to do it. But I don't know what that looks like as far as budget situation.
It can be costly when you put, you know, those construction monitoring cameras. There's a couple companies that do it. It is costly, and you do need to get the right vantage point also, which is often hard. And you may have to put a pole up, because if we kind of put it on the corner of the high school, you're going to miss a lot. So there's a little bit of logistics involved in it. It is possible if we want to explore it, but it can be costly.
Yeah, well, something to think about. It doesn't have to be perfect either. I mean, like I said, Doug Snow could probably throw something up there, and it might not be high-def, and it might not be perfect, but it's just something.
Something, yeah.
I've had projects that do that before, that had, you know, one of their surveillance cameras that they put up there, and those are monitored and can kind of--
We do it on the cheap at URI. I have a camera out of a window of another building that just kind of looks at it. So when I'm at work and I'm looking at a project that's halfway across campus, I can just pull it up and say, see what's going on.
I think if I could put a Ring camera on my mom.
It's pretty much the same, but yeah.[488.12][488.12](laughter) It's not much more than that. But I wouldn't want to have it impact the budget. So if we can't do it on the cheap in Halls, then maybe we shouldn't bother.
So let's put it on an agenda for going forward, and we'll figure something out. Thanks. Go ahead.
That's just the last photo. It was just a view from the side, just kind of showing the patio being down and gone at this stage. So today, as an update, not on the photos today, but we're cutting in the new roadway along the Hazard Building, taking out all of the loom and materials that shouldn't be under the pavement, and getting that prepped for paving probably next week, we're hoping. And then the last step would be to strip the pavement in Hazard that's due to be removed and perform the curb cut into the street. We're going to save that for last for obvious reasons, for people coming in and out. So it's moving along well. We haven't hit any hiccups or any bumps that would stop us or require any existing conditions worries. There is a couple -- one thing that came up, there's two trees along School Street that are currently along what would be the front of the building that weren't shown to be removed. In talking with Phil Conti, they're not part of the final landscaping plan, and they were asking to have us remove those, whether that be during this stage and whether that be during the next bid package stage. But I think we're going to want to do it now, just because it's a pretty big impact to School Street. You're going to have a lot of traffic there, and it's also the front of our construction. So we're in the middle of putting a price together for removing those two rather large trees that are on School Street.
So I stopped by the site, and he pointed the trees out to me. One of them is actually, like, the roots are growing up, and it's buckling the sidewalk. So it actually would be an improvement. And to your point, like, none of the pictures and none of the drawings that we have been presenting have those trees involved, anyway.
Yeah.
I just don't know as far as, from a town logistic perspective, with these particular trees, like, what to -- how to navigate that if it's part of the project? We just move on it, or do we need approval from somebody?
Yeah, I would just send me what you can on just which trees, and I'll get over the DPS, the Department of Public Services, just to make sure, because highway also, we have a tree warden. And so just to make sure there's communication there on if they're within the right-of-way, which are on town property regardless.
Yeah.
Should probably just consult with them and make sure there's no issues. If I recall, many of those trees are not in great shape. There's wires there.
No.
They're cut. So I don't expect any issues, but just to avoid surprises, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
And along those lines, have you -- just maybe a stupid question, but on the curb cut, have you communicated with DPS, because it's a town road?
We -- no, we have not. For the curb cuts coming into the -- along School Street coming into the--
Yeah, so that's something we should also discuss offline, just to make sure there's no surprises there and we're coordinated.
Yeah, that's part of the bid package one set, so that wouldn't be until September, so we do have a little bit of time for that. It's not part of this project.
I'm just not sure if there's a physical alteration permit on the town side required for that. I know it's a town project, but different departments, so I just want to make sure there's no issues.
Would that be something that went through during the permitting process, or is it something separate that needs to be done?
I don't have an answer to that. That's why I want to know.
Gotcha.
I just want to avoid, I don't know what I don't know, so just better to ask, right?
Sure.
So I think this is a discussion for Rich Bourbonay, the DPS director. He'll be able, with the engineer, Amar Conboy, to be able to just resolve these issues pretty quick.
Okay.
All right.
So in addition to the work that Gil Bane is performing, Doug Snow with the district also is coordinating with Cox to rerun a temporary internet line, a new fiber line, to make sure that we're not interrupted by construction. So that work is going to be happening this Sunday evening. They're going to be doing the switch over Sunday evening into Monday morning around 6:00 a.m. So we had previously discussed this with Mr. Pedraza, to let him know that there will be an interruption to internet service between 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Sunday night into Monday morning. So for any super early birds that work in the district, they will not have internet access at that time. Some very dedicated employees.[781.62][781.62](laughter)
Or people who would just have insomnia, so.
Yes. Yes.
That's true. Oh, good. I have a question.
Yes.
I think you may have touched it already, but I just want to clarify. There was that email discussing the -- that line and then the water line?
Yes.
Is that what you were talking about before?
So Phil and Sam have been working with Violia, and it does look like -- let me pull up the response from Phil I got. So he expects that the domestic water will be able to remain off of School Street, and that the fire will likely need to come off of Columbia. It looks like there was some miscommunication within Violia as to how the correspondence with Doug happened, that we wouldn't be able to pull our new water service as planned. So we don't anticipate an additional cost in doing fire off of Columbia, but it's just an additional piece of coordination as we are demolishing the old building and constructing the new one. So that is still in progress and process with Violia. It's in their court right now to confirm that information, but we'll be able to update you guys if that changes.
So it's not related? Okay. But thank you for that update.
Yes. Yes, but it did put us all in a little bit of a panic as well, so the engineers hopped on that, and we were able to get that smooth, thankfully. Rhode Island Energy has yet to give us a date for the temporary power, the new poles that they're going to be putting in. Mark Moore has reached out to them, as has Phil Conti. Payment was sent out to them last Monday, the 28th. So we -- that was as part of that very linear process. After payment is received, we get on the schedule, and we are still waiting for them to let us know what that scheduled date is. If, for whatever reason, their schedule ends up pushing us past the first day of school, we'll have discussions about a weekend or after-hours shutdown, so we are not disrupting school hours. But hopefully Rhode Island Energy will come through, and we won't have to have that conversation.
Is there anything that the town can do in that situation? Like, is it somebody can call somebody? Or the state?
We do have a liaison that works in municipalities we can call in. I would give it probably a few more days, because they just, you know, they've gotten the check, they have to verify it's processed, then they can schedule the work. But if they slow it, if it seems like it's just their schedule's going to be slow, then we'll make the call and try to give it a push. But I want to give them a chance. They've been responsive to date, and I think, you know, Eric, who was our liaison, was away this week, I believe.
Yeah, he's out of office this week.
So when he comes back, my hope is we get some traction early next week. If it looks by next -- the end of next week, like things aren't moving, we'll give the push.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on where we are with the enabling site work?
Doesn't look like it can move on to item four, Discussion, Update, Hazard Building Logistics. I believe this is about Gil Bane, and if there's any updates around the process of getting your offices into Hazard.
So Tony Magida from our office is working with the superintendent, who in turn has gone to the trust. And so right now, it's kind of a back and forth between marking up documents. You know, we'll accept this, we need to add this. So it's going back and forth, I think, from a legal standpoint, I guess, at this point. So it's probably not going to happen for another week or two. I'm guessing Tony's on vacation for the next week and change, so it's probably going to delay a little bit. That's the update.
Okay. Do we see any issue, like, any glaring issues?
Not so far. Michael Pollak's reviewing and going, doing the back and forth, and they've found common ground thus far. And so I don't -- I have not been informed of any reason that they believe that would stop.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I guess the one question I have for the Building Committee, though, is in order for it to happen, it requires us to have our own access in through a back door at Hazard and our own staircase and whatnot. And that requires Doug Snow to put in its own FOB and its own security stuff for us to get in and out of. There is a cost involved in that of, I want to say, five or six grand, and it has a two to three-week lead time to do that work. I asked Doug to not do it, because we were going back and forth, and it was still unclear as to -- and I didn't want to spend the money if we don't need to. But with a two-week window to having to get it done, I don't know if that's anything the Building Committee wants to authorize, knowing it may not happen. Just throwing that out there.
I think that's something that we need to -- district, it's a district's decision and our school committee. I don't know if we have to weigh in, depending -- I don't think the cost is high enough that school committee needs to weigh in, but I think that's a district thing.
Right now, it would be contracted through the district, and as it's a project expense, Luke and I kind of discussed, similar to the work that Cox is doing, the district contracted it, and their, you know, funds are being transferred from the project to the school district to pay for that. So Luke and I were kind of starting the discussions as to what that process would look like for something which is, you know, much smaller than the fiber rerun.
I called Doug on this last week. He got back to me yesterday. I missed his phone call, so I owe him one. But yeah, it's a low-cost item. It's necessary for the project. We'll -- my biggest thing is the bid requirements, because it exceeds $5,000. So I want to make sure he had a contract that we could tag along with, which I'm assuming he does. We may even have one on the town side, because I think it's the same vendor. So we'll figure that one out. The bottom line is, if we need to get it done, we'll get it done.
All right. So that should bring us to item five, Discussion, Update, Early Bid Packages and Other Overall Project Progress Updates, Including RITM Permits. A nice overarching agenda item for you.
Big, beautiful agenda.[1208.86][1208.86](laughter) Let me share my screen again. We have a PowerPoint to share, and go through overall project updates as well as our bid results. So looking overall, where we are in our schedule, we see the red line here towards the, you know, midpoint in August roughly. I can't believe summer's almost over, but here we are. So right now, where you can see the overlap is in the construction document period and the estimating phase, this dark blue and the light blue bars. That means that the 60% construction document set has been issued to our independent estimator, Myakota, as well as Gil Bane, for estimating. We're expecting those numbers to come back around the 18th. That, just as a reminder, is we're going through the bids that were received for bid package one. This will be -- the estimate will be for the remaining bid packages that still have not yet been bid out as another checkpoint to where we are with our costs. So that effort's looking to happen towards the end of the month. There's a couple vacations that intersect with doing the reconciliation on around the 18th, so there's going to be a lot of pre-work that's done with the reconciliation, a lot of questions asked. And then I think it's the 27th that they're anticipating having a reconciliation with Narego between Myakota and Gil Bane to go through those two estimates. And we'll be able to provide an update at the following SBC and Town Council meetings as to where we stand with the estimates for those remaining packages. You'll also see here, we are still within our gold bar for permitting, as we are. We have submitted the foundations permit to the town, as well as some erosion permits as we look at stockpiling on Curtis Corner, as well as erosion control on the high school site for enabling site work and for our foundations. And we are still awaiting a final approval from RITM. We have received initial comments back. Sam did receive some comments a day or two ago that he is working on a response to, so that is good news. We are looking for September 1st for our final planning approval and building permit issuance or foundations permit issuance, and RITM is required for both of those items. So we are within that timeframe. Hopefully, the turnaround to the response is given will be quick, and we'll be able to get that permit issued within the timeframe that we've targeted. So right now, that is looking good for us. All right. As we are here with our key dates, we are here today in front of the School Building Committee requesting a recommendation of award for early GMP, for an early GMP for early bid package number one. The recommendation would then go to Town Council on the 12th. This is going to be the initial construction contract, our interim GMP. This is the first 30% or so of the work. As we'll go through, it includes bid packages that we've required to go out early in order to maintain a end-of-summer completion for 2027. So as we go down those dates, we targeted 8/29, as we mentioned, for RITM, as well as our final planning approval, and then 9/1 for the issuance of the foundations permit. So these are some of our critical path items that we have coming up. Civil Engineer has been working with the Planning Department to ensure that any open requirements from planning are being closed out while in advance of us needing that final That's the four-week look ahead for site enabling that we went through. I'll skip over that. So here we are with our recommendations to award for GMP number one. So the packages that were bid out were concrete, structural steel, fireproofing, elevators, enabling electric, site work. We are showing here in dark gray the enabling site work that was already previously approved. This is just formally being rolled into the contract. With that includes site services. That's like a general requirements for Gil Bane. That's essentially the support of the work that's happening. Owner allowances within those trades for unknown scopes of work. General conditions, that is Gil Bane's cost of doing work, the construction manager fee, their bond, insurances, any -- we have some ADA permit fees for the state. We have a $50,000 allowance for the Union Fire District for their costs, and then the construction manager's contingency. So those are some of kind of the soft, non-tangible costs that we're looking at. And then we're also incorporating the pre-construction fee and geothermal test well. Those are just formally being included within the contract amendment, but those are not new costs, costs that have already been approved. We're just formalizing them now. So the first bidder that was received, or the first bid, the recommendation for award is to J.L. Marshall &amp; Son for a value of $3,397,000. That is roughly $435,000 under budget, or under the design development estimate. Structural steel recommended award is to Northeast Steel Structures for $5,407,105, just under $2 million under budget. H. Carr &amp; Sons for fireproofing at $654,510. That's roughly $209,000 under budget. Otis Elevator for our elevator scope at $216,000. That's $21,000 under budget. Enabling electric for -- to James J. O'Rourke, Inc. for $1,077,400, which is just shy of $31,000 over budget. Vinagro has already been awarded. We are looking to also award Vinagro the overall site package at $5,998,661, which is roughly $2,477,187 under budget. And then, because a lot of these soft costs are percentage-based, that brings the initial estimate to about $418,000 under the target for where we were for these scopes of work within our design development estimate. One thing I do want to caution, as we are looking at these numbers, it tells a great story of how we are $5,462,000 under budget. But I do want to caution that number and being too excited and capitalizing on all those savings yet, because we do still have a significant amount of work yet to bid. There are a couple of trades out there, particularly masonry. We're seeing big overages and electrical. We're seeing big overages on other bids within the state. So we want to be cautiously optimistic with that number, that while we are excited to be under budget, we don't want to report that as a total project savings yet until we get the remaining bid packages in. But overall, this is great news. Our GMP 2 projection does include where we were with the design development estimate. We will be able to update this once we get the 60% construction document estimate. That's for the rem balance of the remaining trades. That'll be included in GMP number two. So we'll have another check-in to validate this number at the end of the month, once we get those reconciled estimates back for the 60% CD set. We do have Gil Bane here to answer any questions about the bid process, about the bidders that are being recommended, so I will open it up to the committee.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, it's great news, better than the alternative. And I agree with Kate that we don't -- there's still a lot out there, so not going to put it in the bank yet, but it's better to be ahead in the fourth quarter, well, actually second quarter, than it is in the end. But just curious, like, the overall, like, Gil Bane's strategy for selecting the companies that they have. Is it low bid? Is it folks you have confidence in, previous experience with, combination? Is it folks you have confidence in, previous experience with, combination of each? Just kind of talk us through, because we didn't, usually we're used to seeing all the bids, where now we're just getting the selectee.
Yep. So, we have, our process at Gilbane is we have a pre-qualification process, so we let all, you know, vendors out there come to us with their financials and their safety records, and from that grouping, we qualify them to make sure that they can handle a job of this size and have the right safety ratings to be able to perform as we would need them to. So, with that grouping, we send out, I think each of these bids went out to seven to 10 different companies. They all came in, we got anywhere from four to six bids for each of these. We scope review the low three, and then we make sure everyone is apples-to-apples, are looking at the drawings the same way we are. They're including everything we've asked them to, and then they come back with their best and final budget number, and from there, we select who we feel confident in.
One other thing, too, Dave, is you're not seeing it on this spreadsheet. This is your 30,000 view, but the individual RTAs that are going to be presented before the Town Council this night, we list all of the different bidders that were on there, so you'll see who actually put the bids in and what their numbers were, and see what the spread was between the bidders at that point.
Well, it sounds like a great process, and I'm assuming by the time you get to that, the best and final of those bids are probably pretty close together, and it's...
They're all very tight. If you look at the bid comparisons, everyone is very close.
Yeah. No, it's good.
Yeah, you'll see that on RTA.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns here?
I'll make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation of the Town Council for the execution of Amendment AIA A133-2, 2019 Contract Guarantee Maximum Price Agreement 1 with Gilbane Building Company for early bid package number one at South Kingstown High School for a price not to exceed $23,887,771.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes, so we will bring this recommendation to the Town Council on Tuesday, August 12. And I'm assuming we'll have people who can speak to it. We'll be at the meeting.
Yes.
Perfect. She's like, "Yeah, him." She's watched our meetings.
Actually, I don't know if you've officially met Laura. I didn't think so. So, Laura and I are both going to be the project managers on the project, just co-project managers, so Laura also was part of the interview process. I don't know if anybody remembers that, however long ago that was, but yeah.
Can you just say Laura's last name?
Wilson, I'm sorry.
Wilson?
Yeah, Laura Wilson.
Perfect. Thank you.
She's like Madonna. She doesn't have a last name.
Laura. Laura. All right. That's exciting. All right. Let's move on to Item 6, Discussion, Action, First Day of School Logistics.
So, Gilbane, I don't know, Laura, if you want to talk about the process you and Chip have been working through, or Mark, regarding the pathways to parent drop-off pickup, et cetera?
Yeah, so we met with Chip and Terry last week, and we went over the routing for buses and parent drop-off and the student parking. I put together a sheet for him with arrows to direct traffic, because it can be confusing. So, we're working through, he's going to send out correspondence when he gets back from vacation to the town. So, that's where we're at right now. It can obviously change, whatever you need, but we're going to be putting up signage, make sure everyone knows the right entrances and exits at each part of the day.
Do we have a picture that we want to show at the time, or if you don't have it handy, it's fine?
I don't have an update to the, what Laura's referencing, because I do believe they're still working through some of the in-and-out directions, so I don't want to put something out there that's not final yet.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good.
Has the police or the SRO been involved also, you know, as far as communicating with public safety about the new changes and patterns? And just in case there is an issue on the roadways, backups, they should be aware. So, I don't know if that communication's happened through the school district or not.
Chip did loop in, SRO Alex.
Okay. All right. As long as there's communication going on, I just didn't want any surprises.
That brings us to Item Number 7, Discussion, Update, Memorials, Archives, Inventory. Do we have an update on that? I know Chip's kind of the, leading the charge, but I'm not sure if we have any.
Yeah, he hasn't done a whole lot yet with that. I did send Kate correspondence between Rick Soravo and I, that he's on board with the tower, the tile tower.
Yes.
Being taken down, and then a bench with a memorial placard on it, so that they're on board. He's just, as we, he just asked that we just keep communication, which is fine. So, I sent that to you.
Yes, yes, I received that. Thank you.
Great. All right. And this is just a standing item, Luke, Number 8, Discussion, Update, Hazard Field Land Swap.
So, the application's over. I'm waiting for feedback. I had a couple of questions. I have a call on the poor Paul Jordan. I don't know if he's out this week. I'm going to give him another call today. And I'm waiting on one map from Phil that I needed done, and he's supposedly working on it for me to support the application, but everything's pretty much done, just waiting on the final validation. At that point, just so everyone knows, so the state has to actually submit the application. What we're doing is providing all the information. I've already laid the groundwork on all of that verbally, and we've transmitted maps in the past. It's actually on the state website. If you go to the GIS, there's actually a proposed land swap in their system. So, this has been well in the works. So, I don't expect any resistance from the state. That'll get forwarded on the National Park Service, and they'll review it accordingly.
Does anybody have any comments, questions about that? All right. Let's move on to Item 9, Discussion, Action, Soil Storage and Curtis Corner Field Updates. Just again, a broad update, if we have it. If we don't, we can move along, but I just wanted to keep it there and kind of on the radar.
We do have an update. So, we did receive some initial sketches from the Civil Engineer for soil stockpiles to both the Curtis Corner location as well as the Disc Golf location across the street that was identified. It does look like both areas will need to be utilized based on the amount of storage soil that we're going to need to be storing. So, we'll have to have further conversations, Terry, about what that looks like, when, how long, where parking is going to happen, et cetera. But as far as, any questions on that before I move into the Curtis Corner schedule?
My only question is, have we talked to, or are we talking to Town Parks and Recs? Terry Murphy? Rex Everly?
I talked to Rex.
Okay.
When we had discussed about putting the pile at the, that field below South Road. He was fine with it. He just asked that we just leave a space, and I think we, I don't know, I can't remember how long, how much space it was for the Disc Golf people to be able to walk across. So, it's kind of towards the, the space would be towards the hill. So, Rex is on board with that, and so they're good.
All right. Perfect.
The Gilbane is planning to have a six-foot fence surrounding the stockpiles just to keep people off of it. Yeah. I would say hopefully, hopefully it doesn't end up becoming a hazard for the Disc golfers with the fence, but...
No snow for the next two years.
Yes.
Awesome.
Along those lines, I know you talked to Rex, but I don't know how looped in, you know, Terry is, and then also into the fact that we're still going to have to use the existing field space next to, like, the hope was we could move all the materials down next to the Disc Golf. That doesn't sound like it's the case, so do we have an actual plan that we can show people? Because that's the other thing, is public information, they're going to see these big piles show up, and it's going to spark a ton of questions, and then we're going to have to explain everything. Rather, get it out of the gate and put the communication out in advance and say, "Hey, here's what to expect."
We just got a sketch yesterday from Sam, so that's being vetted, and then I think once everyone's collectively, professional team is collectively comfortable with where those boundaries are, then we'll be able to share it with Rex and Terry and be able to go through what that would look like.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I also just recommend making sure that it's talking points that we can bring to the Town Council, because they're going to be the ones who get the input, and that's where the discussion will come. It won't come here. So, we just want to make sure that they're fluent also in what we're looking at.
Yes. Yes, we will. The drawings right now are very technical, so I think we can add a little bit of color to them so that they're easier to read for most people and be able to present them out. I would not say at the 12th meeting, just because we have a lot going on on that agenda, and we may not be prepared. I had to send out the presentation already, so it's a little late for that, but at the following meeting, we can provide an update for that.
The closer we get to it, just so that, because to his point, what's going to happen, I'm actually surprised we haven't heard back from work done at the high school. So, to me, it's going to be, something is going to all of a sudden be there, and people are going to be like, "What's that?" And then, then that's when the comments will come in. So, as long as they're fluent previous to that, but so whenever we're closer to that, it'll be fine.
Okay.
I do want to point out, we do have a lot of time, it seems, right now, but that's probably one of the earliest things we're going to do in the beginning of September, would be to start stripping and hauling out soil. So, while we do have some time, it will become a critical item for us in the field to do, because that's the first thing we're going to do.
Thank you. Because it's already August.
Summer's already gone. I'm not sure how, but summer's already done. Yeah. I feel like it was over before it started. All right. So, the, and the remaining Curtis Corner scope, this is a very wordy slide, so bear with me, but we did work through, Phil and I worked through an initial schedule for Curtis Corner, focusing right initially on the demolition of the existing, partial demolition of the existing middle school and site stabilization where the building is removed. So, we've outlined a few dates that actually line up very well with the release of our final GMP, which will be the final construction contract for the high school. So, we are going to be looking in short order for SBC recommendations for Curtis Corner Middle School demo and site stabilization scope to submit to RIDE, requesting approval for Town Council School Committee for that scope of work as well. So, we'll be kind of working through on that 30-day window. It's a small scope of work. We expect very quick turnarounds from RIDE for this. So, throughout September and October, we'll be working through the design approvals for SDD CDs for the demo and site stabilization scope of work, looking to bid that work out in November, receiving bids back for approval at the end of November, which is also the time in which we will be asking for approval for GMP number two, the final cost of work for construction at the high school. So, the reason why we did this, and we kind of tried to cram the design approvals into a pretty short amount of time, is because that then gives cost certainty for, A, how much are we under budget on the high school, fingers crossed, and where are we going to be with the demo cost relative to our initial estimates as well? That gives us a much, much clearer picture of how much money we have left to spend on the field. So, this initial exercise will give that cost certainty to be able to plan in definite terms the work that'll be happening on the field itself.
I just saw we had an extra $5 million, so we're good, right?
We're not going to the bank with that yet, Terry.
Easy. So, I'm a, I'll be, I have to miss the 21st meeting, so if there's any way I could get the drawings, like, I'm leaving on the 21st, so if I get the drawings the 20th, I just want to look at them, I could provide comments for the meeting.
Yeah, we've identified, kind of, some of the holdup was conversations about where we're going to be by forcating those, the existing building from what we're taking out, you know, where that cut point was going to be, where the electrical is. We got some actually recent insight from Brian Mahoney was helpful in identifying the electrical service for the field, where it is, and it'll actually be part of the area that's being saved. So, some of those kind of minutia details, we've been working through in finalizing the demo scope, and I think we're finally there. So, I'll make sure that you get a copy of those drawings before you head out.
I just want to make sure where, everywhere it says Town Council approval is like blocked out, highlighted, and make sure that that schedule of approval is clearly given to the Town Council, so they know ahead of time that they're going to have to make decisions during, all along the way. I know they're prepared for it, but I want to make sure it's like boldface, shiny, bright lights. Bring back old-school PowerPoint presentations with the zippy, the clippy, or whatever it's called, just so that they know they need to do action on those dates to keep us going forward.
Yes. Yeah, so this slide is included in my presentation on the 12th. I can highlight them and have some flashing lights around them on those states as well.
Awesome. Anybody else have any other questions there?
Two quick things. One is, when you do come back, just what is the state of the building being left in? Because I think we need to be very clear on what that looks like, because we're leaving a dark, empty box, and then at some point, we're going to pass it off to others or whatever, but like, you know, weather tight, making sure, is it plywood or is there masonry construction, right? So, just, that would be something that I would be particularly interested in. And then the second question goes to demolition of the main building, the existing high school. Is that part of GMP 2? Did I miss that?
Yes. Demo abatements, GMP 2.
So, we'll have cost certainty there as well, once, so by the end of the year, we should have cost certainty on the majority of the project, less the athletic fields.
Correct.
So, maybe you, even though it seems clear, it's clearly not. So, we have CCMS, demolition and site stabilization, and I know on the 20th and the 24th, we have SKHS, GMP number two, and bids for, just put SKHS, demo and site stabilization. So, you have it for the GMP, but also put it for, next to bids.
Oh, yes. I'll put CCMS bids for demo and site stabilization, because GMP 2 for the high school includes demo of the high school and everything else that's still remaining.
We just want to make sure that that's clearly worded out.
Okay. I'll work on that language.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Exciting work. Great. Thank you. All the way, all the way around. Very exciting. It seems anticlimactic for how exciting it is to actually see. I went over with my steel toe flip-flops and was picking Mark's brain. He was very excited to see me flip-flop across the field. He was like, "Here she comes." But it, I didn't go near the work machines, but it is very exciting for our community to see that it's happening, because the question always is, we've had these meetings going on for a decade almost, and to actually see things happening for the community is, it's really exciting, even though my voice, I'm not a cheerleader, so my excitement is pretty subdued, but it really is. My family is more, is even more excited, because they know that this starts, like, it's actually happening. There are many days I get a text, like, "Is this actually happening?" And it's like, "No, yeah, drive, it's happening." So, that, I appreciate all the work from all the bodies, all the companies, all the team players. It is really, really exciting, and thank you all very much. We have community comment as item number 10. We have no community members in the room, so we can move along. We have our discussion action for item 11, next meeting, date, time, potential agenda items. So, it's August 21st, 8:30 here, unless there's some sort of conflict I'm not aware of. We have a, you know, we're, as always, building the agenda between now and then, so if anybody has something specific they want to make sure we get on the agenda, please email it to myself, we're members of the project team. Does anybody else have any other comments, questions, concerns?
Would that be the last meeting, 20, or is there a new start after that?
Well, that's a good question. So, at that meeting, I think, yeah, because once we get back to September, these aren't going to work, so we'll want to flip back over to the evening meetings, and so we'll just make sure that that's out there. And, yeah, for a potential agenda item, for, not a potential, but a definitive agenda item for the 21st, we do want to make sure that we are putting item for the 21st, we do want to make sure that we are putting through a change order process, kind of with definiti, and getting it in front of the Town Council to make sure. I would say also the School Committee probably, we want, if there's, depending on who needs to make the decision, if there's a particular change order that comes through, and what that looks like, so. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know if you guys...
We started the conversation, but it's not on the agenda for today, and I don't believe it's on the agenda for council on the 12th, just because of the enormity of what is on the agenda.
Of course.
So, we'll, we will discuss it at the next meeting, absolutely.
So, do we want to have a, like, a solidified draft process by the 21st?
Yeah, I would say, let's schedule a time next week so Brian can be involved in the conversation, too, we had talked about that, but review what you have at that point, we can provide feedback on, you know, the internal process, and then have something that we can...
On the 21st, that we can make a recommendation?
Yeah, make a recommendation, if we feel comfortable, we can make a recommendation at that time, or we can make any tweaks or whatnot and go from there.
That's good, all right, great. All right, so unless anybody has any other questions, comments, or concerns, we all entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, this meeting will adjourn at 9:26.